Okay, I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals. Before we begin tonight's hearing, I'd like to go over a few of the ground rules by which this board operates under. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. However, the board is under no obligation to adhere to that sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf, or be represented by an agent or attorney. The applicant, or his or her representative, shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. A butters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard, and any other interested parties present at the hearing shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application will be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within 90 days after the public hearing for a special permit. And all three members of the board must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit, or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed, and it is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The burden for supporting the need for variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name an address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my left, Mr. Dave Antea; to my right, Mr. Randall Heglin; and myself, Ray LaFonda's chair. The meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this meeting? And I ask that all cell phones be silenced during this meeting. Thank you. Okay, the first case before the board will be that of Mass Ave Rentals LLC, Garrett And requesting a special permit, their applicant, the applicant was denied because of the zoning act. And it talks about 29 residential apartments with on 43 parking spaces, and the apartments will consist of 15 one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartments, and 14 two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartments. Mr. Lorden, agent or attorney?
Yes. My name's Garrett Lorden. Thank you for allowing me to come in tonight to present. I appreciate it. I live in Townsend on 15 Bayberry Hill Road. And I've previously done a project on the Goodnow Pearson Building, which we own as well. And that's when I became involved with the city, started working hand-in-hand with the city, and they became, there was a project on 40 dash, 40 to 52, 42 to 50 Parker and 52 Parker, which are the two buildings on the corner of Parker Street and Connors, where the bridal shop was at one time. And for a number of years, working with Trevor through the economic development, the mayor, and Roland through the building department, the three of them, and myself, more so my dealing with mostly directly with Trevor and economic development. He and I tried numerous avenues to try and get the building some life, and bring it back to life, you might say. And everywhere we turned, we hit dead end. So we had numerous meetings with the state of Massachusetts. And we kept falling into the same scenario where they said, "Well, you're not a gateway city. You don't have 30,000 population, and we can't help you with any grant money for this. We can't help with financing for that. We can't, we can't, we can't, we can't." We kept hearing that, and hearing that, and hearing that. And then we also tried to find larger investors. You know, I just took the position that it doesn't matter if I end up doing the project. It's just, let's try to work together to get the project, someone to do it. We tried to get a larger investor, which was a gentleman that brought us to Chicago, who went to a White Sox game.
Oh, jeez.
We did all this stuff to try and get an investor who was going to come, and then work hand-in-hand with the hospital, I mean, the, the college, and that came to a dead end. And basically what it boiled down to, every time we went to the state, and they were saying, "Well, if you are a gateway city, you could have this, and you're a gateway city," Trevor would explain to them, "Well, there's a reason we're not a gateway city. The numbers of population are decreasing. It's a lower median income, and we need more help than the gateway cities. Gardner needs more help." So after being very persistent, I think, I think that Trevor's diligence caused the state to procure a new, new thing called Underutilized Properties Program, which is for blighted buildings. And this is the poster child for that. So they, they came up with some grant money, and this was the first time the state of Massachusetts had offered this program, and it was tailor-made for this building. And that's what finally made it come to fruition, that we could do this. And even with the grant money, it still makes it extremely hard to make the numbers work because of the cost of construction, and the cost of turning an older building into revitalizing. Things like architectural costs and things like that are about a third more than normal, than what you would normally see, and just the demolition and all of that. So the costs are very high. But in the end, we, between myself taking a larger amortization to make the numbers work, getting the underutilized property grant, and now working with the city, this is what we've come up with tonight, the proposal in front of you. So the building, as I mentioned, is located on the corner of Parker, Connors, and the facade will change and have this appearance here, where it'll have all-new windows. The bottom portion will be shaker panel squares here in vinyl, not vinyl, but PVC, so it'll be something very durable. You know, if something gets, I hate to say it, but if it was getting graffiti, you can take it, put lacquer in it, you can wash it off. So it's very durable, very easy to clean. So we thought we'd do that on the down portion level here, and then go with bigger windows. And we went a style of double hung with two-over-two grid to make it look old, because in the old days, a lot of times you'd have two-over-two grid pattern, easier to see over here. They'll have two sat, two grid up here, two grid down here. So it's a bigger window. And then on the main street here, to try and make it look like it's more picture window, we put some larger glasses, a five-foot glass here with a flanker double hung here, and a flanker double hung here. And we did the same here, to give more glass on the main street.
That elevation there is from Parker Street?
This is right here, it's from Parker. And then, it's hard to tell, but it indents here to go into the entry of the building here. It kind of cups in. So this is, this is the main Parker Street here. Prior to this, one of the main construction constraints in doing this, what made it very challenging, is this building is at a different elevation than this building. So when you get to the second floor, you can see, here's the second-floor windows, here's the second-floor windows. So we have a 44-inch discrepancy between floors, and then when you get to the third floor, there's a 71-inch discrepancy. So we were able to, what makes it difficult, obviously, is meeting handicap accessibility. But we were able to pull it off, which I can show you on the floor plans by, you know, you've got your elevator that were, new elevator that's going in the building, but we also incorporated some lifts into some very wide hallways, which allow handicap accessibility to come up, use the lift, and get onto the next elevation. So we were able to cure a lot of those ills, but you still have the separation. But what has happened, as well, is that this building has a brick veneer now, which is only one brick thick. And because of this, there's so much need to add windows and move windows down, that essentially all the brick would either have to be completely opened back up at a different elevations, the cost would have been astronomical, and then the finished product would have been a patch job that wouldn't be that attractive. So what we decided to do is remove the brick veneer, remove the brick veneer. The rest of the building is all structural brick, so it's 12 to 15 inches thick. So by, when we remove that, then we'll go with a seven inches to the weather. It's a composite siding board. It's a very expensive siding, but it's composite, like you would have composite decking. It's seven inches to the weather, and I'll just pass it down so you can grab a holder that's covered all the way through, so you never have to paint it. It's very durable, but the, the end product is very elegant.
Who makes this?
Pardon me?
Who makes this?
Everlast. And other companies are making it, but it runs over $400 a square. It's very expensive.
Wow.
But it will be extremely nice look, especially on the main street.
No maintenance, that's...
There's no maintenance to it.
That's key.
Yeah. So we'll go with the Everlast siding, and then that siding, if you want to not, not to bore you to death, but I think it's pretty cool, is, you take a look at this, when you have two that join together, they have this metal clamp. You screw in two screws over here, two screws over here, and the panel moves together along the wall. So you keep a nice tight seam, and if you have expansion and contraction, then it moves as a whole entire one, you know, along the whole wall, which is really nice. So it's a very nice product.
In fact, I just used it on my own house.
So this gives you a look of Parker Street, turn of the corner, going down Connors. Then this is, we're on the, we're on Connors Street, looking at the backside of the building and the side. So the town, they have a beautiful park, as you well know, and the retaining wall is here, and the set of stairs come up here, up to the park over here. And this is that side, and then this is parking here, and parking here. And then this is the new elevator shaft. There's a, on top of the roof, there's a second means-of-egress stairway that comes down and wraps all the way around, and then there's an elevator shaft here. New elevator shaft that services the building. And this is the whole backside. There used to be metals, metal staircase, or metals fire escapes all in here. And this will be all stripped up and sited up, just like this. This, right now, is cedar clapboard siding, very old.
Are the two buildings connected now?
They're connected. Yes, they are. Yeah, so you can't go through from first floor to first floor, but you can from second floor to second floor, and third floor to third floor, with those, with the...
Yeah, with the variations.
Yeah, with the variation. So it worked out well, because we were able to use that same hallway as our main hallway. And then the hallway is very wide, so I was able to incorporate lifts into it, so...
So you have two elevators that...
One elevator.
And that's the one in the rear?
That's the one here, and it's right in the corner, it's right in the pocket. So where these two buildings join together in the back, right here, is the elevator shaft. So it's brand-new elevator, running up full length, but then there is a separate lift, as you pull down, which is probably right about, is about here. This is where the lift is, which was access, as you can see the difference in the elevation in the windows. These are third floor, this is third floor. So your difference is 44 inches here, and 71 inches here, but the lift will accommodate that, and they can just go in and up in a wheelchair, and then right back into the wide hallway.
Okay, Mr. Lorden, just before you go further, I'm just gonna make a clarification on the introduction of why you're presenting this, on which part of the code, because I didn't read it in the beginning. So I'm just, I'm just take a minute or two and read it, so everybody will understand.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
You're operating a multifamily dwelling at 46 and 52, with a portion of 32 Parker Street in Gardner. The parcel IDs are M22-5-25, M22-5-13, and M22-5-24. It's all located in the commercial one zoning district. C1 is denied by the building commissioner because it does not comply with Chapter 675, Attachment 1. City Code of Gardner Table of Uses states that your requested use, number five multifamily dwelling requires a special permit issued by this board. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on how, why this is going forward.
Thank you for doing that.
Please continue.
Okay. So this is, I'm gonna do the floor there, then we'll go on to the site plan. But this is starting in the, this is starting in the basement level here.
That's here, which is in the middle.
So if we were looking at it, and we were in the back, it'd be really, the building is like this, if you're in the back parking lot. Parking lot runs like this, it comes like this, so... So this is the parking lot, this is the, this is the parking lot here, where Connors Street here, coming in the parking lot here, here, and the building being here. So parking lot here, kind of like a seven, and then the park is here. So I'm facing the building just the way it is, just the way it is here.
Where's parcel 32 for the, the parking? Because I'm a little confused. You have parcel A that goes close to the building on your drawing.
Parcel?
But you're mentioning parcel 30...
32 Parker.
32 for parking. Where, where is that? I'm a little, I'm not clear.
Well, basically, 32 would be here, so it was, that was the old, this is the park. So this is it here. It's a separate piece of land that the city owned as well. So this would be the, the old movie theater, I believe, would have been 32, 42, 52, and this be, I believe they call this parcel A. But this parcel here was separate from the building, so it was basically a separate deed, or not, but combined into one. So it was this piece of land right here.
I think you're, should be the shaded area.
The shaded area is right here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's that little circular thing there, that's the walkway around the park.
Right. So this, this area right here is that parcel, and that's also 32, right here, because otherwise this building would have zero parking. So to invest the money that needs to go in there and have no parking would be suicide.
All right. So will you own parcel 32?
Correct. Right here.
All right.
Yes.
In how many spaces?
Forty-three. While we, while we're on that, why don't we just do this here? So there are 43, there are 43 spots here, two handicap spots here. And then my desire is to, as I move further along, I'd like to add, because the building is here, the elevator is here, I would like to see if I can incorporate a couple more handicap spots, or reposition the handicap spots here, so that I could grab two additional spots and make easier access for handicap accessibility to get into the building and get directly to the elevator. So I believe, from looking at it, measuring it, I believe I have enough space to do it, to make a turnaround in here, to incorporate that and make it all happen. But I'll, obviously, I'll talk with the building department, and I'll, whatever boards I need to re-present that, because that would be a change of plan, would be an addition to plan. But I think it would better the plan, it would give us two additional, two additional parking spaces, but yet the best thing for it is to, I'd like to reposition the handicaps with easier access, and I believe I can, I can do that quite easily. So, but I'm not presenting that tonight, because I don't have it worked out. But it is something I'd like to entertain, if I could. So, and now, as you know, because I think it probably was presented to you earlier, that the city brought in the redevelopment, got into redevelopment, they redeveloped the public, the private, and the park all at once. So in that, the engineer, when the engineer drew it, they drew everything in mind for public, private, and park altogether. They, they put the island in here, there are landscape trees in here right now, and this portion here is owned by the city. And I've had talks with Dane, and Roland, and Trevor, and the group. And what I would like to do, and they seem to be in favor of it, is that something has to be done with this to beautify the area, because the city has done a tremendous job with sidewalks, repaving, light posts. It looks very nice. So I would like to cut the pavement that's here, because it's not finished. You know, it's just a rough pavement. I could cut that, run some irrigation into here, and then have our, our company take care of looming, looming and seeding, and maintaining this as a grass strip along with the current trees that are here. Because the thought was earlier for the city to put mulch in here and chip it with mulch, which would be okay, because it'd be less maintenance to it, but yet, everybody has done such a fabulous job to this point, it seems a shame not to finish it and get to the finish line. So I would like to pay for the irrigation here, and then take care of maintaining that as a grass strip as well. So, and everyone seemed to be in favor of that, but the parking meets the need, because we have, we have 15 one-bedroom, then 14 two-bedrooms, which equates to 43. There are 43 spots here, and then we may end up gaining two more here, which would take us to 45 of currently at 43, which meets the number. And site-wise, it was very important to get the utilities into this building, because everybody knows what's going, what's going on. It's like a fire drill. The, the city is doing a great job, they're moving very rapidly, and they're doing, they're doing a nice job. The UEL is doing a very good job. And by the way, I don't know if it matters to this board, but they're very good to work with. You know, they, they've bent over backwards to accommodate us to hold off on some of their work, so that we could put in, we've run a new sewer line into the building here. So there's a new six-inch sewer line that runs underground here and stops at the door here. We've also run a new, we ran a brand-new six-inch water service for sprinkler here, and we've also run a new six-inch for domestic here. So we've got a new six-inch domestic in, we have a new six-inch fire service in, and we have a new six-inch sewer line installed, and the gas company has installed a new gas line, which runs from here through the parking lot area here, around the back, and is installed against the building back here. So we're, we're pulled off the road, the city can continue, and the birds are chirping, because...
And all that, all those sprinklers, everything has been approved by the fire department?
We've had, we've been in contact with the fire department, and knowing that shutting it down, we've done, obviously, when you have to shut it down to do this type of work, we've, they've asked us to install heat detectors throughout the building, which we did for temporary means, and then now we're going to reconnect, because there's, before they had two fire suppression systems, one being a dry system to service the building on this side, one being a wet system to service the building on this side. So we have reconnected the dry over here, and we're leaving everything in for as long as we can in construction. So the dry will keep working, and then the wet, they're putting in a new tree, a new service, a new, everything up to this point, and then, then they'll reconnect to the old until we have to stop disassembling. And at that point, we have a, we have a fire plan, you know, that's in place, and we have the heat detectors in place, so that the building will have, and it has notification. Those heat detectors are, are wired to the outside alarm and strobe, so that there's notification as well right now. So we're in good shape as far as utilities, and we have plenty of what we need to fight fire in the future, for domestic, for gas, we've got the new lines, so everything is new. We've thought about lining the sewer, and then better heads prevailed, and good advice from Roland, and new drain, and we all decided it'd be best for this project, and moving forward for the city of Gardner, that we don't have to ever come into the road for long, forever, really. And that could possibly happen with the relining, so we aborted that, and, and went with new. And we're off the road, so everything's good. So I'd like to just, jump ahead. This is the first, this is the first-floor layout. So we had five in the basement. Oops. And it runs like this. And the, and they all stack, so what you see, what you see is one unit, there's a unit that stacks right over it. We also have two ADA units, ADA compliant units here. This is street level on Parker side, this floor level, so it's handicap accessible. There's your elevator here. We've built a new stairwell that sits on top of the roof, that makes its way down for a second means-of-egress, you know, one here, one here, remote from each other. As far as heating and cooling, because it's all going to be, you know, heating and central air conditioning as well, granite countertops, they'll all be very nice units. And currently, right now, if we had to go with the units today, we'll be going with a natural gas. All of our units are all high-end efficiency, so they're 96% efficiency, modulating motors, and, and then we run a, we go with either a Renai or a State of Water Heater, that direct instantaneous tankless heater, you know, so they run at 95, 96% efficiency, so high-end efficiency. But we haven't stopped there. What we'd like to do is, we're going to research electric heat pumps, to see if that's an alternative to go. I don't have a vast knowledge when it comes to electric heat pumps, but I'm going to educate myself, because that, that seems to be a push or a trend moving in that direction. But even if I go that route, I still want to have a fallback of having provisions for gas in each of those utility rooms, so that if it failed, not so much failed, but if it didn't prove to be all that it's cracked up to be, and the cost was high for the tenant, that I would be able to convert that to go to natural gas. So right now, I don't have a definitive direction on utilities for that, but that's my plan thus far. If I had to make, draw a line in the sand today, I would go natural gas, the warm air and air conditioning, and the high-end tankless heater, instantaneous heater. But I do want to aggressively research electric heat pumps to service these. So you'll notice that, once we get to this, that the floors just kind of overlay each other, and they're all very similar. The only difference is that the first floor has, where the dance studio was, there's a little pork chop out back here, that only is one-story. So when you come to the second floor, that's no longer, no longer there, other than the means-of-egress, which sits on the roof. And they overlay each other, just like that, so the units stack, and that being the third So all in all, it's 29 units.
Okay. Randy, or Dave, any questions at this point?
No.
No?
No?
He has the 10 things to go through, the special permit, and it wasn't included in here.
Well, I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Lorden, under the special permit, there's nine, 10 conditions that you have to address, part of the ordinance, if you would like to address those now?
Sure.
Before I go ahead and start asking for comments from the floor?
That'd be fine, sure.
Okay. I can share, you can take this and read from it, or I can read it and you'll respond, whichever you...
If you don't mind reading it, that'd be fine.
Okay. One, the proposal shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed in the entire city, and shall be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses, and other uses permitted in that area, same district.
Sure. So what we've done is, obviously, the building has been vacant, other than the dance studio. But design-wise, what we've done is taken and made bigger windows and the larger paint, like we talked about, the double hung with the two-over-two, to have that old-style look, to keep in the look of what would be, what would have been in that, in that timeframe. This Ryan building, I think, was in the 1800s, 1865, I think, or something or other. And bigger, done some bigger windows to almost have the appearance of being storefront, because it's not storefront, it's residential. And what we've talked about is that the need for foot traffic to be in downtown Gardner to solicit and bring business to, whether it be the alehouse, the candy store, restaurants, but the downtown area needs more foot traffic. I have, I have the Goodnow Pearson Building, and the retail units, I have three, which I, over time, and they're brand-new, but I have one unit that's remained vacant since I've owned the building, which is probably 2009, and there's nothing wrong with it. It's all done over, sanded floors. I'm, I'll, I've told the city that I will give free rent for a year, so they can go in, whatever it takes to help some, to make a business work there. I don't care so much about the money portion of it. If they want to bring a restaurant in there, I'll give a restaurant. If they want to outfit, I'll give them two years free. They can just go. So that that way, they're, and entices somebody to come to the city of Gardner to be, to start a business. But the retail spots struggle to rent, and when you rent them, you're doing it at 50 cents on a dollar, and it's very low. So my unit's like the Velvet Goose, and she has big square footage, central air conditioning, very low rent, terrific tenant, terrific person, love having her there, but there's no money to be made. It's a losing proposition on your retail units. So in doing this, I told the city, I said, "There's no, financially, this is a tough project to, to make happen, and there's no way we could do retail on the first floor and make it work, especially to have vacancies or drop the numbers really low." And the trade-off, by having the residential portion of it here, is to bring that needed foot traffic to downtown Gardner.
Two, the proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relation to the adjacent streets, property, and improvements.
So it's very safe as far as moving on and off the site, especially being on Connors and not on Parker. And Connors is a one-way street, so you don't have two-way traffic, and there's plenty of parking, there's plenty of turnout space. It's all designed to the current specs of, you know, designing, engineering-wise, designing a parking lot. So you have your turnout lanes, proper size, you've got the adequate number of parking spots for the units, being 43, and then if we added a couple more here, it'd just be another home run. And then on top of it, you also have your, your town parking lot here, so there's ample parking in that area now. And being on Connors Street, it's not a heavily traveled road. It's perfect to access in and out safely, and then make your way to Parker, and then decide which way you're gonna go. It's perfect to access in and out safely and then make your way to Parker and then decide which way you're going to go.
Was there, with regard to the pedestrian movement, you've got a couple of bedrooms that will front, the windows will front on Parker Street. Any concerns with, was that addressed at all in your thought process?
No, what I plan to do is just for privacy for the tenant is that I will supply the shades because I don't want, there's two things I don't want to have happen. I don't want to put any towels or sheets on Main Street. And then, and then the other is, I'd want them to have the privacy, even if they, even if they don't, if they can't afford or don't want to purchase or whatever it might be, they'll be supplied. And it'll be, continue to be supplied so that they'll be able to have privacy. But I don't have any other, any reservations about having it be like that. And then as far as all the safety things, like these, these buildings will be, they're cambered everywhere. So we put, I put cameras in the elevator, I put cameras around the building, I put cameras towards the dumpster. When you enter into the building, it's a fob entrance to get into the building. So it's very secure, you know, to get into the building, very safe. And then obviously, new sprinkler systems throughout. But it's nice to have the eye in the sky. At one point over at the Good Now Building, they had, they had an issue where someone pulled the fire alarm. And we were able to tell them live who the person was that was outside with all the people. It's the guy in the orange jacket, you know? So you can, you can identify right away, live, lifetime, you know, by having the cameras. It's very nice to have.
Are the cameras monitored twenty-four seven?
Yeah.
Okay. How are you going to handle the snow removal in your parking areas?
Well, you, we'll have to pile it up in here and off the areas here. See the ends here, these ends here, here, and then here. And I also have, I have a loader, so, and I keep it at the Good Now Pearson Building. So that will run between here and there. And then we currently, when we do the Good Now Pearson Building, we like to be a good neighbor. So when we do, when there's a snowstorm, it's Andy's Sports Shop, then our building, and then the candy store. We start at Andy's Sports Shop. We clean in front of the sports shop. We clean in front of our buildings. We clean in front of the candy store and around the corner. In fact, my son Mitchell's the guy who, he's the loader guy. And so we remove the snow across Main Street so that the city doesn't have to. So every snowstorm, we're right to the curb. So he takes care of that and we take the snow and remove it. And, and we've got an agreement where we put it on, on the city land, you know, all that stuff that comes off the street. And then at the Good Now, he piles it up in areas that we can pile. But I wouldn't mind working with the city to say, you know, maybe we can work, work in conjunction together to say, maybe I can take my loader and we can remove this and this. If you give me a, a city, a city area where I can take my loader and move it because it's easy enough to do.
Worth a discussion.
Yeah, it's worth a discussion. Because to me, like our bigger properties, we have a big project in Gardner, in Lunenburg, that's a hundred and twenty units. And when we do snow, we remove from curb to curb in the sidewalk. So it's perfectly clean. So that none of the tenants hurdle or go over a snowbanking, nobody slips on the sidewalk. And there's no snow, that each snowstorm, if we get an inch, that's gone from one end of the parking lot to the other, up over the curb and across the sidewalk. We like to have, you know, a clean lot if we can, you know? So it presents a little bit of a challenge, but you do have, you've got areas here, areas here, areas here, and then the island here. But if I could work something with the city and say, look, let's work together. Let me take care of this and, and this. Just give me a spot in the city where I can pile this and this. You know, which the city owns a lot of land. They say, okay, you can stockpile here or wherever. But that's a topic for discussion. Even if it doesn't happen that way, there's still ample room to pile snow. And I have a, we own a, with site and with site, so we have a dump truck, I have a ten-mo dump truck, brand new. We can take the loader, take the dump truck and remove it if we have to.
Okay. Number three, the proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading, unloading of vehicles and goods, products, materials, and equipment incidental to the normal operation of the establishment's use.
Right, and it's quick access.
You did address a lot of the parking.
Yes, and we have a sidewalk here that they can come from here and get right into the building here. So it's quick access, easy access.
So that's another actual door into the building, that spot there?
Yes, right, right next to the el, the elevator is here.
Okay.
And there's a, you walk in here. We're going to put, there's a small little shelter, an airlock, so that you have to enter the airlock. And that's where you'll fob yourself in, so that nobody can just walk into the building. They'll enter the airlock, they'll fob themselves in, and then enter the building. And as you enter the building, you'll just turn. The elevator bank will be here or a set of stairs here. So you can choose if you wanted to have a fitness time of it, you go up the stairs. If you'd rather take the elevator, just take the elevator.
So just looking ahead, if you get your two spots there for parking, it's not going to interfere with?
It won't interfere with the entry. There's, there's, there's a lot of room between here and here. I can certainly pull the spots back enough to have ample space here.
Thank you.
What do you do, you're going to have a mail, a mail corridor someplace?
Yes, so we're going to have, in the, what I've talked to the architect is I'd like to have them put the mailboxes in here. And if they don't go here, they're going to, we're either mailboxes here or mailboxes in here.
Same with UPS type deliveries also?
Yes. So I, I'd like to keep it in the airlock if I can. If not, it'll be in the downstairs basement level. And we coordinate that with your postmaster to make sure they're happy with it.
Okay, number four, and you've answered part of this already. Proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation and proposed use of sewage, refuse, and other waste products. And you only wanted, you really did touch on methods of drainage of surface water.
So currently, and they've already, they've already covered that, is there's a drainage structure here. And then you have a drainage structure here and a drainage structure here. So all the sheet drainage goes here, and that's already been installed. There's another one here, and then there's one here. So right now, the, the site itself, just on its own face before me even touching anything, has adequate drainage. And this drainage was put in at the same time that this lot was put in.
Where does the roof drainage go?
Roof drains go into this, into this basin right here.
They're piped into it or? Where is the trash receptacle?
The trash receptacle will end up either putting here, here, or here. It'll be a ten-yard dumpster supplied by Shaw, which will be emptied every week.
And it, it won't interfere with your parking spaces?
No, no. There's, there's a very large spot because the wall's back here. And you have all of this area here. This is ten feet. So this is probably twenty feet from here to here. So there's an ample space here. That same twenty-foot spot is open here. So we can set the dumpster here, here, or here.
Now, the tenant's going to be responsible for bringing their trash to the dumpster?
Yes, yes.
On that lower right corner for the dumpster down below, how will the truck access that to get to that dumpster?
To get to the dumpster? Every, all your foot traffic will come out this door right here. They either have to come out here or out of the front of the building. Those are the two points.
Yeah, but your, your trail, the truck from Shaw's is going to back in?
No, they'll have to, they drive in.
Okay.
They'll drive in, they drive in, pick it up from the front and dump it in.
All right, so he doesn't have to go out on the street or anything?
No, no, no.
Okay, number five, the proposal should not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations, lights, and other visually offensive structures.
So, so lighting wise, the only thing that we may, and I, and I'll discuss it with Roland to see what his, what his preferences on this, he may want to chime in, but. So there's a big massive I-beam right here. So we want, and there's a change in elevation of, or definition of how deep the product is. So I have to do something to cover that up. You know, right now, they've got a little facade where they put the signs for the, the stores and such. And what I thought was, we could put like a little two-foot roof that goes around here. With some little bit of, you know.
Downcast?
Yeah, a little bit of downlighting here, just for looks. Nothing that's going to be too bright because you have street lighting all the way here. So it really needs zero as far as lighting. So if we do anything, it's basically just going to be accent lighting that's underneath the thing just to pretty up and show off the windows and, you know, show, show off.
Lighting do they have in the parking area?
Um, this, right now, the city is already, already has a lamp post already in here, here, and then one here. One, two, three, four, five, six. And they're all the decorative lamps. So we won't be putting any more lighting on because that'll be, that'll be, you know, well lit and it will look nice. And we don't want to get into a point where you have too bright. But if, if the city were to say, hey Gary, we'd like to see more lighting there, we'll go put more lighting. Whatever the city wants us to do, we're going to do it. So if they think it needs more lighting, we'll address that.
And I think the issue would be, you know, is any safety from the, your tenants?
There's plenty of.
Walking from the parking, the car?
There's plenty of lighting and we'll, we'll check into that. Like I haven't been to the building at night. So we'll check in all of that because the last thing we want, I build these like I was going to have my daughter live in. Because I know one of the concerns, I have four kids, and when I had my first daughter go to college in Boston, that was a huge decision for us, you know? I wanted to make sure it was safe. So I wanted a place that was secure with the fobs. I wanted to make sure that fire suppression was adequate and the annunciation system was adequate because a lot of those brownstones, they, you know, they weren't, they didn't have it. So that was one of the top priority for me. And then lighting. So I'm going to address those issues just like my daughter was moving into it. Want to make sure it's well lit, want to make sure it's safe and secure. And we do that with the fobs, we do that with the cameras, and we'll do that with the lighting as well.
Yeah, because I mean, as I'm looking at your plan, you pointed out city municipal lights now. Where I didn't see you point to is your bottom parking in that bottom row.
Here.
Nope, further down.
This?
Yeah.
That's the city.
That's the city, so they're taking care of that.
Yeah, so the city has, the city is here and the private me is here. And this island straddles the middle. So they, they've already installed the, the lights all through here. Because they have this nice walkway that goes up here. So this lights up the walkway here at night. So what happens is with all of this lighting up the stairwell, lighting up the walkways, and lighting up this island, lighting up this parking lot, it simultaneously does the same thing here.
Okay.
What about the, what kind of lighting are you going to have for the entrance as the folks go up the street and try to get into the building?
Running here?
Nope, not the, not that part. Where you, you're talking, right?
They'll come in here.
Right, what kind of lighting are you doing?
I haven't, we haven't really gotten that far. But it'll be some type of pack lighting in here, but it will be, I'll let the electrician address it and then we'll make sure that the building department is, is happy with it. And then obviously, we want to make sure that the, the light doesn't stray from the property.
Right.
That'll be a, we really haven't tackled that yet. But it'll probably just be an LED type of lighting that'll be near the door because code requires that in itself, that each door have its own lighting facility. But, you know, you've got, you've got lighting here that's going to cast this way. And that light by the door will also get knocked here.
Is there an opportunity to build a little pent roof over the door with the same downlighting that you're talking about on the front?
What do you mean? So that's an, that's an airlock. So I'm going to run some type of little hip roof to tie into the elevator shaft. So you're saying?
So put some downlighting in that?
In the soffit? That would be nice, sure, yeah. That would be soft.
That's perfect.
Could be perfect, yeah. But I, you know, so we can do some downlighting there, which would, which would be nice because it would kind of run in conjunction with what we'd like to do on the Main Street.
Exactly.
So it would kind of go hand in hand. And it'd be soft enough to accent that entry.
And it won't leave the property?
No, and it won't leave the property, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're up to number six out of nine. The proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters, vehicles, or pedestrians.
I just can't see any hazards that it would present to you because our parking lot enters onto Connors. There's a pharmacy, you've got your, your public parking lot here, there's a pharmacy here. The, in the evening hours, they're not open. And even during the day hours, it's kind of, it's a nice marriage because this parking lot empties out. And then when the, when the, they get going, the park, this parking lot fills up. So your foot traffic is more, is heavier at night here and heavier during the day here and on. There's a driving school over here and there's not a lot of action going on in the building across the street. So I don't, I don't see interfering with anything. There's a vacant building across the street, Dean.
Yeah, you have some pretty clean lines, so there's no parts that are jutting out into the sidewalks or anything, causing people to?
Everything we've done has increased the value of the property. And we're taking away a lot of the hazards, like for instance, right now, which really bothered me was on the Main Street. We, it still bothers me, and this week we're going to get rid of it. There's just plate glass on the, on the windows in the front. Very dangerous and they're huge. So if one of those broke and fell on a pedestrian there, and now that we're, you know, we're in the building, I said to my foreman, I said, and I talked to Roland and he agreed. I said, can we just take those out and we'll board it in? So this week, we're going to remove the second floor glass and that part is done. So we had these fires to put out, which was, the first one was, get the water sewer, get the water sewer and gas off the road. That's been accomplished. Our next one is to get rid of that plate glass on the second floor so it's safer. So that everything we've done to this building has increased the safety for pedestrians. We've made a better visual appearance to the building. And we're going to have, it'll be better lit, everything is going to be better across the ward. There was nothing but a fire hazard before.
What's your renovation timeline? Is it going to be a, a year, eighteen months or?
If you guys approve this tonight, we hug it out. I want to get going right away.
No, from start to finish. From where you, you know, bang your first nail to?
One year. But I want to go as, as quickly as we can to get to the point where, when you deal with winter and you deal with the cold, ideally for me is to get, like I've got.
You might be inside.
Right, and well, I've got a wet system on this side. So I got that wet system here. I'd like to start on this side over here where it's wet. The dry will take care of the fire hazards over there. But I want to take, start on this wet side because I want to get heat in the building to protect my wet sprinkler. And I'm going to have that, the, the main service, they'll put electric heat in there and such. But still, I'd like to get going so I can start getting some type of heat into the building. So, and that would mean I got to get going on one portion of the building and start getting some heat going in. Because I'm not a big fan of temporary heat. There are a lot of safe heaters that work today. But I'd much rather have, you know, either a gas line or an electric line running to a one-man furnace that we can let run and that is much safer. So my objective is to go, 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 get to the point where I can get some heat that's permanent heat that'll work as temporary heat for the building as well.
And it's expensive to use temporary heat.
You're right. And it's not as safe as having it be a full-time setup. So we'd like to, like to, hopefully, our hopes are, we get a quick approval, we get in there, get going, and we get some, get some heat going. I know it's our city because it's July, but it's not.
So what kind of heat are you going to have? I know you said gas, but?
Well, first, you know, our first choice right now is gas, but we're also going to look at electric heat pumps. And, but even if we go.
Right, but I mentioned, is it going to be like the hot water or air?
Warm air, warm air heat with AC and then separate, separate domestic. So the separate domestic is just, you've seen them, the little hanging units that hang on the wall. They're instantaneous, they, you know, quick, super quick, and, and they run at ninety-five, ninety-six percent efficiency. Nothing will be under ninety-five percent. And then if the electric heat pumps are what they're touting them to be, and I educate myself, I get boned up on that, and maybe we'll move in that direction. But we will have a fallback of gas if we go that route.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, the proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. For what you're doing, yes, sure. Okay, eight, the proposal shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services, tax base, and employment opportunities.
No, if anything, it's going to generate a positive cash flow as far as taxation. When you get into larger buildings like this, there, it doesn't produce a lot of school-aged children. And most of your, because I do, we do a number of new construction apartment complexes, a hundred and twenty in Lunenburg, forty-eight in Townsend, the Good Now Pearson Building. And, and just from doing impact studies on schools and then having actual bodies in the seats. These buildings don't generate a lot of school-aged children, not more than what the actual taxation that it gains will well support the number of children that would have to go to school. And there'd be a surplus. So that doesn't, it doesn't adversely affect school systems in a, in a project like this. And then obviously, the gain would be, you've got twenty-nine families here that when they walk out, it's easy for them to go to this pharmacy, it's easy for them to go to that pizza parlor, see if they can put on a seat pizza, get some candy, you know, so, you know, go to the Velvet Goose hopefully, get some good clothing there, you know? So it, it gives, it gives a nice shot in the arm to the city of, city of Gardner, Main Street.
Okay, I'm just going to ask this because I mentioned employment opportunities at the end. Do you look to engage local contractors in projects like this or do you have your own project team?
Well, no, I mean, yes and no. And what I mean, when I say yes, is that I am local. You know, my office is in Lunenburg. So all of our, all of our subcontractors are people that are from, you know, might be Townsend, it could be Leominster, it could be Pittsburgh. But we use contractors all in the area. I've been doing it for over thirty-five years. So most of the, the subcontractors we use, we've used for a number of years and we've got a nice chemistry that works. But all of those people that work for those subcontractors live. live in all of the surrounding towns. They live in Gardner, they live in Pittsburgh, they live in Lemonster, they live in Shirley. So we're keeping the money, uh, locally.
Okay, number nine. This is probably the one of the best ones that meets this criteria in my opinion. The proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan.
Sure. I mean, I've done, I've sat with Trevor, and I will, I got to commend the city of Gardner. I'm not just blowing smoke at these guys, but you've got a mayor, a building inspector, and an economic development that work their tails off. Trevor works really hard at it. I had, I had a lot of experience with Mark Hawk, and, and Rob Hubbard prior to, which was the same scenario. They just worked. I, you know, I got affiliated with Gardner, and I won't bore you with the story, but I had a chance, I, I set a big proposal back when the market dipped and tanked, and I was going to go to Pittsburgh, and I was willing to buy because there was, they were auctioning everything off. I was going to go into drug neighborhoods, High Street, Marshall Street, and, and invest heavily there, but I wanted the city to put a precinct there so that we could drive the ugly out and, and bring up new and raise it up. I couldn't get an audience with the mayor there. So then I in turn went and Mayor Hawk, he was giving me a back rub, giving a foot rub, and said, hey, come to the Goodnow, spend your money here in Gardner. And then Rob Hubbard was the same thing. And then it continued on with the new mayor, with, with Michael, he does a fantastic job. Trevor is unbelievable. So I got, I got friendly with everybody here, and I said, geez, they're doing a great job, and I really like what they're doing. So this project for me is not about money because I'm not making money. It's a terrible economic investment for me, terrible. And friends of mine, I said, why are you going, why are you doing that? You're just, you're not going to make any money. I have to amortize the project out over twenty-five to thirty years instead of fifteen. As an investor, you want to go fifteen, and that's, that's it, that's all you want to do. But at the stage of my career in building, sometimes it's more about doing what, doing, doing a project that means something and working with people that are aggressively pursuing something that's going to make, make a difference. This will make a difference, your rear main street's going to make a difference. All the grant money that, that the city of Lemonster, I mean, the city of Gardner got, you guys are going to, are doing a fantastic job about redoing the city. And you're stopped from the gateway when you come in right at the police station and working your way down. You can have all new, all new streets, all new sidewalks. You've got a lot more businesses coming into place. That rear main street's going to be phenomenal. That bike trail that goes, my God, the work that has, has been done in the last decade is nothing short of amazing. And I've seen it all because I started, that's when I became affiliated with Gardner. And your square two, the business, uh, community there is outstanding. So there's a lot to like about Gardner.
Well, hopefully it all works, because then we can get more citizens and meet that gateway base there.
You're right, get the number up to thirty thousand.
That would be nice.
Sure. Make, it would make your life a lot easier.
They know what Lemonster does, and they're gateways.
Oh, my God, they, they get so much and they don't, they don't need it as much as Gardner's.
So we got a little hurdle, and hopefully this will help.
Everything else.
Achieve that goal.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to ask my members if you have any questions for Mr. Lorden at this point before I go to the floor.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Fine, Ray, I asked the questions that I had listed.
First of all, are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Mr. Jean, our building commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if I could, Gary, through the chairman, um, the, when you say you have a fob system, if that door gets chalked open by a resident for whatever reason, is there some kind of an alarm that something lets you guys know?
There's, there's no alarm.
No.
But what we do is we put, there's cameras there. So, and we have that, because the biggest problem is when they chalk that door, is we have a wet system. So we, we're in fear of our system freezing. So...
And it really throws security out the window, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. So any chalking of any doors, we always, from experience, I've got a camera on that door.
I got it.
So then we know who that tenant is that's shocking that door, and then they get a notice. You got a thirty day notice, you got to get out. So that's the way we run it. And it's, it's a valid point because it's a, it's a huge concern because when you chalk the doors, your stand pipes and everything are right there for sprinklers. And what a huge expense that is.
And I see it all the time.
Yes, yeah. So, and we only have, we have the two. We've got it here, and we have it on Main Street here, which are both going to be cameras. And, uh, and I've got the hallway so you know who's coming and going all the time. But that's a, that's a valid point. And we are all, all over that.
Good. Those shaker panels that you were talking about, the PVC shaker panels at the bottom on Connor Street and on Parker?
Yeah.
Um, in the, in the rendering, you have they're white.
White.
Uh, is that the plan? Because being on, being on the street like that, it seems like it's going to be black.
It might get dirty. It might get dirty. So, I mean...
I would recommend considering a color for that.
I'm open to that.
I would, I would recommend that. Any color is going to be better than white.
I agree, because with the, with the cars and the smog.
It's right on the street.
Yeah, and I, my daughter, who is in the office, she's a black belt in shopping, and she loves to color design and decorate, so.
Now, the white looks nice. It just won't stay white.
Yes, right.
Is that fire resistant?
It's not, it's not. It's just like it would be, uh, if you have PVC piping in your basement, you know, it's the same thing. You know, so if it got extreme heat, it would melt. But to get a fire out here, and remember, inside, we're protected with sprinklers. So it's not likely that a fire is going to happen on the inside. A fire would have to be outside to attack that PVC.
I have nothing for other than that.
Okay, any abutters to the property present who would like to speak in? Oh, yes, Mr. Burega.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. Trevor Borega, Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority. Um, I probably won't get it all because it's been a long time. There's a lot of information to regurgitate here, but this project is four years in the making. The city got a grant, actually the Redevelopment Authority got a grant a few years ago to purchase the properties from Mr. Marcus, who's sitting next to me here. Um, and we put the project out to bid soon thereafter, didn't get any takers to redevelop the properties. Um, then we approached Mr. Lorden, who knew how to successful business, uh, project over at the Goodnow Pearson Building, and he agreed to take it on, at least, at least take a look at it, look at the numbers. Um, we tried to advocate for mixed use downtown. However, we knew that in order to maximize the use of these two buildings, we'd have to do residential. You know, in the past, it was commercial retail on the first two floors, and then just warehousing, storage, and talk for. Um, that wasn't going to happen in downtown Gardner, it's not going to happen. In order to utilize the properties to the fullest, so residential is the way to go. Unfortunately, not, you know, Mr. Lorden actually explained, numbers don't work if you do commercial retail on the, on the first floor and then residential above. Um, and so we decided to go all residential with Mr. Lorden and, uh, land pick the project. Going back to the site itself, I know there's some questions about the parking and how that all played out, uh, when these, uh, Redevelopment Authority took the theater, I have it in the main back, and I think it was two thousand and fifteen. Um, we ended up, um, subdividing the site out once the building came down to allow for land to go with these two buildings, uh, for, so the buildings would have adequate parking, when it came into development, would have adequate parking for the tenants. And that's what's playing out today, which is a good thing. Um, and then we also, like Mr. Lorden said, we have to park the accessway down to the private and public parking from Parker Street and also exit some entrances off of Connor Street, or all the lighting. We're also putting lighting in on Connor Street right now. We're putting Victorian lighting all the way down both sides of Connor Street as part of the block grant project we're doing. Um, let's see, what else did I want to say? Leading up to today, um, you know, it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Lorden's team. I think they have a really viable project. I think it's going to look extremely amazing once it's done, and it's going to have a huge impact on, on downtown Gardner. Having the twenty-eight units, Gary?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine units of market rate housing in our downtown. Um, having that disposable income in our downtown is huge. And that's why the city and the Redevelopment Authority's been advocating for market rate housing, and we still are. And we're hoping to model this in our rear Main Street corridor. It's difficult, given the fact that there are no resources out there, state or federal, for market rate housing. It's all affordable. Uh, we all, we already have a huge concentration of affordable in our downtown, uh, well over five hundred units of affordable housing right in our downtown area. So, uh, this is really a model project. Um, like, uh, Mr. Lorden had mentioned, we did, we're, this is a partnership between the city, the Redevelopment Authority, Mass Ave Rentals, and Commonwealth Massachusetts. Uh, they stepped up finally after a couple of years of advocating for, um, for some incentives for market rate housing in our downtown. And the unrealized properties, um, awarded us nine hundred thousand dollars last year, the largest unrealized properties granted that, that was awarded by the state. And, um, it made this project able to, to move forward, which is, which is great. So I just want to speak, I'm speaking in favor of the project, obviously. Um, and I, I asked the board to, you know, respectfully approve the special permit. At the same time, I'm going to put my planning board hat on, and just so you know that the project will be going through site plan approval, and they've already met with the Valigan View Committee. It's going to be on the, the planning board's, uh, August agenda. And the reason why it triggers site plan approval is because they're creating one fifty in parking spots on site. So it will be, uh, going through the planning board also.
Thank you, Mr. Burega. Thank you.
Question. Historically, what was upstairs of, like where the dance studio was? Was that, I mean, when it was Newbury's and what was upstairs?
It was office space.
All offices?
Yeah. It was all office above the second floor, the Mackey block. That's the way it was all set up bef, you know, before it was...
I, I'm just trying to remember as a kid what was up there.
Yeah.
I mean, there were some barbers up there.
Yeah.
Maternity.
The maternity, maybe, yeah.
I think there may have been a speakeasy on the right side top of it.
The third floor, the, the, uh, Temptations Building, there was a, there was like a balcony up there on the third floor, high ceiling, yeah.
Really? Wow.
Pretty interesting.
Okay. Okay, you all set?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Yet noted, none. Any abutters to the property present who would like to speak in favor of this application? State your name and address, sir.
Dean Marcus, uh, I'm out of Worcester, Mass. I'm on Butler Cross Street now. I'm very glad to see something happened in this building. It seems to be well thought out. And I think Mr. Trevor covered it. Glad to see it being done. And Worcester once they did the apartments, we started one in Worcester, fifty-two, micro unit. I didn't know what a micro unit was, but they put that in my buildings. And all of a sudden, every building down in Worcester above the first floor is all being done, apartments. Very nice to see them. I'm very pleased to see what this gentleman has put together. So I'm very much in favor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marcus. Any other abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Yet noted, no opposition. Any interested parties who would like to speak regarding this application? Any interested parties would like to speak? Yet noted, no interested parties. Ask my board members, any further questions?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, would you like to view the property?
Yes.
You would, Dave?
Yes, I would.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Lorden, who do we contact to schedule? Okay, so if you can give Randy a telephone number?
Awesome, good card.
My cell number's on that. So that's our rental company, that's our building company. Both my cell numbers are on, on each one.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Generally now, it'll be either, excuse me, an evening or a weekend, Saturday, probably.
That was easiest for you, from the board.
Some are still working, so we have to work around their schedules. But, so you're available or a representative?
So it's, um, I'm leaving, I'm just going to Florida for six days, but my son is in town and, and he can...
It's not the time of year to go to Florida, it's hot there, don't it?
It's work. Believe me, with that humidity, you don't really go. No pleasure. Um, so I, and the only time I won't be here is from, um, this Friday to Thursday, but my son's in town and he's well versed with the property as well. So, but wherever, whatever's convenient for you, and the sooner we can do it, the better. So we can accommodate you nights, weekends, early, whenever you feel so you can get in.
Yeah, we'll converse and see what we can work up for schedule. We'll try to move it along as quick as we can.
Whatever works for you guys.
Okay, before I move on, I do want to state and enter to the record that I received the letter dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, addressed to Chairman Greg LeFond, Zoning Board of Appeals, City Hall Annex, Room One-O-One, one fifteen Pleasant regarding the Mass. Regarding application for a special permit, my Mass Ave Realty, forty-two fifty Parker Street. I am not going to read the full letter because it's six pages long. It is submitted by Mayor Mike, Mike Nicholson and Council President Elizabeth Kozinski. I'm just going to read a couple of highlights. The letter is here if anybody wants to read it. If you want to see it after tonight's meeting, you can go to the building department zoning office. They will show it to you, and if you, they want, if you want a copy, they will make a copy for you. So the items I'm going to just touch on, it says, "We are writing in support of the application by Mass Ave Realty to construct a twenty-nine unit multifamily dwelling in Commercial One District for the properties located at forty-two Parker, forty-two fifty Parker Street." And this goes to number nine out of, as we read from. And that's the one that's consistent with the city's community development plan and master plan. "The need for increased housing in the downtown was cited in the city's current urban, urban renewal plan, and the purchase and sale of properties associated with this proposal is consistent with what the current urban renewal plan states. As such, we believe the proposed project to meet all the requirements of the Zoning Board of Appeals, grant the request of special permit, and believe its issuance would be in the best interest of the city. Respectfully submitted, Michael J. Nicholson, Mayor, City of Gardner, Elizabeth J. Kozinski, President, Gardner City Council." So like I said, if anybody wants to see this after the meeting, you can, you have the opportunity, or you can obtain a copy in the zoning office. Okay, any further questions? Randy, can I?
No. Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, you want to close the public?
Generally don't before a site visit.
Yeah, we're going to wait through the site visit.
Okay, so we...
So this will, this meeting will stay open. Uh, we'll just go to the next case, and then we can close it after we view this, have the site visit.
Can you, uh, can you motion to close it outside of meeting after the site visit? Or is that not appropriate?
Well, we would have to, that would be calling another meeting, and we'd have to post it. So we're going to work it in as fast as we can.
Understood. Thank you. Well, thank you for letting me come to the night.
Sure. Okay. So I'm going to state, this portion is closed, only the presentation by this, but the, it's me, this case is not closed.
Understood.
When do you go before planning board?
I've been before them once, and then, um, Trevor's next, we've already done one, one...
Presentation.
Presentation.
Second Tuesday of August.
Second Tuesday of August.
Okay, then the next case before the board.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You can stay or you can leave if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case before the board. Where's I find a sheet? Okay, is Mattson Homes Two, Inc., one twenty-nine Mason Road, New Brunswick, New Hampshire, oh three oh seven one. Your application to construct the forty-foot wide access driveway at one forty-six B Greenwood Street, Gardner, Mass, parcel ID M twenty-two dash nineteen dash twenty-one A, located in the General Residential Three Zoning District, GR Three, is, is denied as it does not comply with Chapter Six seventy-five dash seven twenty C, one of the City Code of Gardner. The zoning code, code states that your access driveway may be a twenty-four foot wide, twenty-four feet wide at maximum. And so do I have a representative from Mattson Homes?
Ken Mattson, one twenty-nine Mason Road in New Brunswick, New Hampshire. Um, we're building a two-family out on Greenwood Street. And what it consists of, the building is up close to the road because of the top of the lawn itself, getting sewers, be able to flow into the sewer system. Getting sewer to be able to flow into the sewer system. We have the house, the building is close to the road. My thought was I was going to go forty feet wide. Got a single car garage for each unit right in the middle of the building. And that way we could have one car in the garage and then two cars off the street in front of the units, each unit. But then I was informed by Roland that the zoning only allows twenty-four feet. So I am here asking that I can do that to forty feet wide to keep, so that we can keep three cars off the road. Whereas if we don't have that forty feet, we can, we're going to have to be just two cars, one in the garage and one in the garage. That's my, what I'm asking for.
Okay, now for a variance, there's three conditions you have to address.
Okay.
And I won't give them to you in the exact order, but one is, by the construction of this forty-foot driveway, does it create or aggravate a safety hazard?
Not that I can see. I would think it'd be safer by keeping vehicles off, having to park on the street.
How's backing into Greenwood Street? Will they be backing out directly into Greenwood Street?
Yes, they would be backing.
Not if they back into the driveway.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Well, I was hoping Mr. Mattson would have said that. So as long as they do back in, then they're coming out face first, but.
Mr. Mattson, question. Where, um, where is this physically located? You go, if you're heading out south on Greenwood Street and crossing Baker Street.
It's right, I guess where there's a park down in the back and then there's the trucking.
Do you have, you have a foundation there yet?
Yeah, a foundation is in.
So your, your property, is that about the trucking company?
Yeah, the back of it, about the trucking company.
It's one house from the corner, basically.
Uh, I think there's two houses.
Maybe two.
From the corner and then the.
Is there a sidewalk on that side?
Yes, there's sidewalk on that side.
For the forty feet, so that goes across both. I guess one of the questions I had was, the forty feet goes in front of both of the houses.
Right.
Right? So I was wondering where their property line was and where they were going to kind of divide whose property is whose property, because when it gets the snow removal, sometimes some people pile it up on the line. So I wasn't sure where the property line was or in between the forty feet.
Property line is red, but they're actually owned by, it's one property.
Pardon?
It's one property, but two families, but the line between the units would be right down the center of the garage.
And maybe to David's question, is this, are they going to be, is it going to be condo wise, two separate owners?
That's what we intend, yeah.
Who's going to, are the owners going to handle all the snow removal or be a condo association?
The owners, the individual owner will handle their own snow removal.
If I'm looking at your plan here, it looks like there's adequate space on the proposed driveway on each side. Is that where the snow is going to go when they clear it?
When they clear it, I would assume they're going to go into the front of their house on each side.
Because it's going to be condo, have you drafted any condo language yet?
No, we haven't.
So I, I guess I'm not. I, I was curious why couldn't, I haven't seen the property, but why couldn't you move it, I guess, over on either side of the, the building? So that they would be able to have.
Separate. Well, probably mainly because the garages are back to back right in the center of the building.
So the garages are right.
The garages go right into the building, right in the middle. That's why they wouldn't.
You can't have two driveways on that property either without a variance.
I, well, I.
In a way, you're back here.
Right, right, I, I realize, I realize that.
Okay, so you will be drawing up condo documents, hopefully that would be in the, in the documents?
Yes.
Uh, will you have some kind of divider? I mean, it could be a fence, a painting, something that clearly identifies the driveway belonging to owner A and owner B.
Yeah, there, we, I know in Leamester I did something very similar and we actually had it cut out in the pavement.
So is it going to be two? I, I guess my question would be, are the driveways on, if it's a condo, are they on the common, common land? In which case you don't need that divider.
Correct, they are on common land.
But, so I guess the question is, is, is it going to be, is there going to be a divider? You just said, you know, you, in Leamester, you.
I, I did it in Leamester, but I really wasn't planning on doing it here because of the, link to the driveways and stuff I got here. It might, the maintenance hazard have a little strip right in the middle of the park, the driveway.
What's, um.
So is it, if, if it's a condo, they're going to own the condo?
Yeah.
Are they going to own the land?
They'll own the land together and I believe it'll be in a condo.
Association.
Association.
So just for the one, well, two condos, they're going to have an association for, for their.
Right.
How far does the building sit back from the road? You just get your foundation.
It's twenty-plus feet from the face of the garage to the, right away on the road.
Not, not much over that though, right?
No, not much over.
The setback's twenty feet, they're just making it. And if they went back any further, they would have had to pump the sewage, so that's the reason they didn't. There's definitely a topographical barrier here.
I'm just going to ask this question because further down on Dartmouth Street, the house that is on the corner of Dartmouth and Greenwood, when he started that house, he measured twenty feet from the road. And it ended up, that's not where the city property was. The city property was five feet onto what he thought his property was.
So I have an as well foundation plan from Mr. Mattson.
So that's not.
Setbacks are not an issue.
Okay, I just want to make sure because it gets pretty expensive if you have to move it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the setbacks for the house and its location are fine?
It all complies, yes.
Mr. Commissioner, I'm going to ask you a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, it's got two parts. He said he could put a strip or not have a strip or tar down the middle, but now you may have two driveways. If it's not one solid piece. Could he put a berm down the middle? So just to mark off driveway, drive B. Could he?
Yes.
And it wouldn't violate zoning?
It wouldn't violate zoning, but it would violate everything in my body that says the snowplow driver is going to hate you.
Well, hopefully they would have their own snow blowers.
If they're going to hire somebody to plow the driveway, you don't want a berm up the middle of the driveway.
Well, I'm just, I'm putting, because in my mind, I can see it's, if they're not friendly, you can have an issue. You know, and just.
I would say that they could have an issue if the driveway was only twenty-four feet wide too. So.
Yeah, but.
And if it was twenty-four feet wide, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, I know how abutists are.
That's the way it is and.
That's the way you abutists are.
You know, I don't care if you have a, that's why shared driveways, most towns allow a shared driveway for two houses. But you always are dealing with that issue. One guy might want to take care of his driveway.
Let's paint a line up the middle then. If we have to have a line, let's just paint it.
Because I'm wondering if, if you put the berm in as, as just one suggestion, then is that still considered common area? Because now you're dividing it.
Yeah.
Because it would still be considered common area.
In my mind, but I don't have any jurisdiction over that.
You know what I'm saying is, because now with it wide open, cars can go either side, it's common area for the condo. Now, when I put a barrier there, I mean, it's a berm or whatever it is, does that still allow it to be considered a common area?
I think that, I don't know what your name is here, but it would all be in the condo docs and how you wrote here.
If someone called me and said so-and-so is parking in my parking spot, I am not going to enforce that, so please don't give me a condition that says I have to.
But I think there's something, I mean, it could be a stripe right down the middle. Lets them know this is yours, this is yours. Because you appoint, you're parking on my side. You know what I mean? Now you've got an issue with two of.
Well, that'd be the simplest way to divide it, would be just put a reference line there.
Pretty simple. Any other questions? Okay, that's one of them. Create or aggravate a safety hazard, you address that. Your application, it, does it derogate from the intent of zoning? Of course, because that's why you're here. And first is create or aggravate a safety hazard, no, I'm sorry. Due to shape, topography and soil conditions of the property. You know, you need to get a variance to do this. So you have to support, based on that, why you're going for a forty-foot driveway?
I've gone for the forty-foot driveway because I, because of the topo of the land where they have, we had to keep the building up close to the road to get our sewer flow. And I just think that it creates a better situation to be able to have the cars off the street and in the, in front of the, on the properties.
Would it be significant financial expense if you had to shore up? I, I know what the property looks like. It goes just like this.
Yeah.
To build this back up and everything else. I, I assume this financial expense right there to try to build the sub.
Well, it has been.
Sub foundations and everything.
Yeah, because we're into the foundation already and most of our fields in backfield. And.
Okay. All right, any questions? This is one you probably want to see.
It probably is. I usually do.
Yeah.
So you're mentioning that a lot of what we've questioned is going to be addressed in their association documents.
Yeah.
Those will be reviewed by.
Just to clarify something, if we don't get the variance, we're still doing the twenty-four foot wide and we have the same situation. But it needs to.
So twenty-four foot wide? Wait a minute, what do you mean? Twenty, if it was twenty-four, that'd be forty-eight.
No.
I, I guess I missed your.
Twelve per unit, twelve foot wide per unit. So it would be down to a, just a, being able to park one single car back, one single car in front of the garage.
So they would only be able to have one car.
Outside on the, without being out in the street.
And one in the garage?
One in the garage.
So they would be able to have two?
Yeah, they would be able to have still each unit.
So you're looking for a third car?
Yeah. But these are three-bedroom units. They're nice units, three-bedroom units and the family that's living there, they're going to have three cars eventually.
So I, sort of I look at it as like a wing to the garage.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Wing to the side.
Wing to the side, it kind of erodes over into the front, where the front door is right there.
Okay, any questions at this point, Randy? David?
No.
Okay, any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Mr. Dean?
If I could, I'm, I'm sure you'll, it'll make more sense to you when you visit the property and see what I'm, what I'm about to say, but where there's not to be granted, what Mr. Mattson will do is have the twenty-four foot curb cut at the street. Go in and then flare out to forty feet to get what he, to get what he needs. And by keeping it twenty-four feet at the street, you'll just be forcing that car on the outside to back across the lawn. I don't think by not granting the variance, we're going to change anything. I just want to make that clear.
So what would happen, what you're saying Roland is, the, the curb cut here would be twenty-four feet?
That's allowed, yes.
Right. And so he would do that and then go out and make it wider to the garage.
That's correct.
And so then when someone is coming out of, say, condo A, they're going to definitely be going into the other person's side to get, because there's only one, each would have twenty-four feet?
No. They would go in twenty-four feet.
That's what I'm saying, is that if this was just twenty-four, if I'm coming out of here, I'm, I'm going to have to, that's, that would be shared to get out onto the street, out of my condo.
It's going to be twenty-four feet wide at the street, he's going to go in three feet and then flare it out to forty. That's what.
So what I'm getting at is both condo people, or both people in the condos would be coming out of the, the twenty-four foot wide curb cut.
That's correct.
Whereas now it's, it's almost like they have their own exit onto the street.
Right.
But it's only twenty feet. Is, am I accurate with that?
I would say so.
Yeah.
All right, so twenty-four and then it would flare out.
They'd be driving across their lawn.
Yep, I understand.
And then you'd be one.
You're going to drive across, part of it's going to happen, you're going to drive across. Because you're going to have a sidewalk coming up on each side, you're going to have to slope the sidewalk down. So they'll be driving across that slope part of sidewalk.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were.
It'll be much easier to see when you get to the site visit.
Okay.
And you'd be ending up tiring your front lawn.
That's what we're doing, part of the front lawn, the ground.
Okay, any other representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Nope, there are none? Any abutists to this property would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutist property and the abutists to the property president would like to speak in favor of? Noted, there are none? Is there anyone in opposition to this application? Is there anyone in opposition to this application? Yet noted, none? Are any interested parties to speak regarding this application? Any interested parties to speak regarding this application? Nope, there are none? Okay, board members, any further questions?
No, I'm, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Mattson, if we're going to line up a visit to Mr. Lorden's project, we'd like to line it up at the same date. Probably just after or just before, or who put the time. Probably on a Saturday or an evening.
Do you have a number where you can reach that?
Yes, the six oh three, five four seven, seven four seven four.
Six oh three, five four seven, seven four seven four.
Yes.
Okay, so I will not close this meeting. Uh, we'll keep it open so we can do the site visit. And then once we get back at that, then we'll start scheduling a final meeting to close the meetings. Okay?
Very good.
So you're free to go, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case before the board. Mr. Diaz.
Can I stand on this side or do we just?
Doesn't matter.
Wherever you'd like to be.
So we can hear you.
Just, my cough isn't catchy, it's a pulmonary thing.
It's fine.
Just to let you know.
All right.
I've only been coughing for four years.
Um, my name is Mike Diaz. Um, I live in two, in Stephanie Drive. Uh, requested a special permit for a second driveway on the right side of my house. Um, it's especially for a growing family and I have family members with disabilities. That would help out if I had an arched driveway going up to the.
All right, but I'm going to read the introduction first.
Okay.
Okay, you've got an application to construct the second driveway at twenty-five, twenty-nine Stephanie Drive, Gardner, parcel ID M seventeen dash fifteen dash three A. It's located in the General Three Residential Zoning District, G Three. It's denied as it does not comply with Chapter six seventy-five dash seven twenty C two. Each parking area may have one additional access driveway for each two hundred feet of frontage, provided that all such access driveways shall be at least two hundred feet. provided that all such access driveways shall be at least 200 feet apart on the parking area measured from the center line of each access driveway of the City Code of Gardner. Your plan shows less than 200 feet from the current driveway. And you're Mr. Diaz?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you stated that you're here for a special permit, and it's listed on our agenda as a variance. No, it's a variance. You don't have the nine issues that Mr. Lorden had. You have the three issues that I addressed with Mr. Mattson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now you may begin to talk about what you want to do, where you want to do it.
I live in 29 Stephanie Drive. Right now, there's a driveway on the left side. Was requesting a small driveway on the right side with an arch for a potentially growing family, and also it would help some of my family members with disabilities pull up right to the front of the stairway. It's about around 25 feet back and about 17 feet wide. There's parking in the front, there's no hazards, it doesn't interfere with any of the neighbors. There's no fire hydrant, there's nothing in the way, or I don't see any hazards or any issues.
So according to your drawing?
Yes, sir.
You want to put a semicircle driveway?
Yeah, so the little arcs in the front.
It's going to actually enter onto...
Yeah, it's going to go from the first driveway to the, the end of it.
And it'll exit over there?
Yes, sir.
Right on, okay.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Stephanie?
Yes, sir.
All right, if you want to address those three conditions before we ask any questions?
Yes, sir. What would you read it?
Okay. Does it create or aggravate a safety hazard?
I believe it does not create or aggravate any safety hazards to anyone or anything in Gardner. There's nothing in the way, there's nothing, no fire hydrant. I don't see any issues with it.
That will need a curb cut.
Yes, sir.
All right, have you approached anyone on that yet?
Yes, sir. I forgot his name, I do have his card, but I guess he, he does the, I think Roland, you told me the topic.
City engineer?
Rob Alvin.
Yeah.
Rob Alvin.
Yeah, he told me about the curb cut. This is new to me, this is my first time, so I never knew anything about a curb cut, I didn't know what that was, but he, he told me about the curb cut.
Okay. Okay, so you're going to enter, will you be entering only on one way, or can you come in on both sides?
You could come in on both sides, but going out of Stephanie Drive, going towards the highway, I usually never drive up the street, I always drive into the street, so more likely just be one way.
So you'll always be coming out, I'll call it face-first?
Yes, sir.
Or grow first to the highway?
Yes, sir. And only one car can, can fit, it's not going to be two cars, it's going to be a small, little passage for one car.
What will the width be?
The width will roughly be around 17 feet, roughly. Cars are usually around 15 or 16 feet.
Are you going to retain the existing driveway that you have there now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the new driveway will come off of that driveway in circle?
Yes, sir.
At 17 feet?
Well, no, it's, it's 17 feet wide, but it's going through the whole, the whole thing.
Going right across the front lawn?
Yes, sir. And there'll, there'll still be lawn left, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's, there'll still be lawn left in the front, it's not going to be, you know, there's a huge front, front area.
And how large, this is going to be a parking area?
Yes, sir. Only for roughly maybe one car. It's really small, really small, but I don't...
You'd use that other one for?
I would like to use it for parking. It actually doesn't go all this far back, it, it actually goes to like around this area, it stops like right here.
How many cars do you have?
Right now, I have about six cars.
How many?
With my family, six cars with my family. Well, it's not only me, I'm not the only one driving, but my family.
Six vehicles?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, my family.
Do you know what the dimension is here? Are you going to go right to the property line?
You mean the front or the, or the side?
The side?
No. It's going to be really small, there'll still be grass right here.
But do you know what the dimension is?
Oh, yes, it'll be roughly around 17 feet and around 25 to 30 feet back, and there'll still be a good, I don't know, probably five to eight feet in between.
Okay, because I believe on the ordinance, you need five feet.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be, there'll be space there. Yeah.
Second, does it derogate from the intent of the ordinance? It does, you're here. That really is not allowed by the ordinance without a variance. Next, the one that's the more difficult one to address is due to a shape, due to a hardship, due to shape, topography, and soil conditions would cause, I'll call it excessive financial cost, and that's why you need a variance to do it. You have to support that.
Yes, sir.
That's yours.
So you're saying just the cost of just maintaining?
Now, is your property flat?
It's flat in some areas, it's, it's hard to really explain, like some areas will be flat right here, flat over here, then it's flat over here, then it does arch down a little bit right here, so it's, it's not even, it's not a hill, but it's not flat.
But you don't have to go through major construction?
No, no.
All right, so really it's just a slight downgrade?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So what's the financial hardship that you're looking for, that you've got to support this request for variance?
The, the cost, you're saying, or...
Financial cost, the hardship that you, you're going to incur, if this variance is not granted, will you incur a financial hardship?
I mean, I, I would prefer to, you know, with a growing family, to have a car, to have more space, and not, you know, always have a car on the, on the street, but financial hardship, I really, I wouldn't say too much about it, I mean, it would help my family, I have some families with disabilities, it would help them right to the front door, but financial, I'm not exactly sure if it would be a...
All right, I'm going to ask some questions, and some people may consider them personal and that. How many in your family?
Right now, it's five.
It's five? You have six cars?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned a disability, does someone or a number, more than one, one or more have disabilities?
Yes, sir.
That need access that close to the front of the house to get in?
Yes, sir, my, my two aunts. I have two aunts.
You what?
Two aunts.
Two aunts?
Yeah.
Do they need lifts or anything to get in, or...
No, they just have trouble walking.
No wheelchair ramps or anything like that?
No, sir.
Are, are there any other houses on the street that have, not necessarily curved, but two parking areas, or two driveways, I should say?
I know my neighbor right next to me has a three-car parking way, he has like one, two, three. He has three, and I think down the street, they have something similar to a handicap driveway that helps their family out.
Randy, you have any questions?
But they only have one, one driveway with the three cars on it?
You mean my neighbor?
Yeah, well, yes, other people on the street, or do they have two driveways?
No, they have, it's a double driveway for two cars, and then a single driveway, they have like a small one and then two long ones. So it's, it's all connected, but it's, it could fit three cars going down it.
That's what he's talking about, this person that's got a long driveway, it's like probably two and a half cars.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
Yeah, what, I was just looking on here, what's the dimension going to be for that?
Around 17 feet. You have around average of a car, a car could be between 15 and 16 feet, so it would have to be roughly around 17 feet.
So you're, you're going to have, if I have this right, this is going to be 17 feet wide coming around?
Yes, sir.
And then it's coming into, this is going to be 17 feet wide?
Yes, sir. That's the smallest I can make it in order for a car to fit.
And then how far back is it from here to the...
Roughly around 25 feet.
So from the curb cut back is 25 feet?
Well, are you including, because the, the sidewalk is the city, so I'm not counting that, I'm counting after the property line going 25 feet.
All right, so from where you have the fence back, 25 feet and 17 feet wide?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yep.
I don't have any more questions at this point.
I don't either, I just wanted to know that dimension.
You don't have any at this point, Randy, okay. Any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application?
I don't have anything for this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And now, just for the sake of expediency, there are no other city officials here in the room. We have possibly an interested party, and we have our videographer over there. So I'll shoot right to, are there any interested parties who'd like to speak regarding this application?
Mr. Chairman, I do not wish to speak on the subject.
Okay, thank you, be noted, no comments, and there's no other people in the meeting at this point, so ask my members if you have any final questions.
I, I do not.
Okay, Mr. Diaz, we're going to visit you also.
Thank you.
Yeah, my big concern, not a big concern, the question is, because of the driveway and the curb, you mentioned the disabilities, but the people can walk in and out of the house.
Yes, sir. Would, would help. I mean, they could walk slow up the stairs on their own, but it would help for a front entrance, so this entrance is actually closer when the cars are here compared to a car being over here, and, you know, the, just to walk, I'm trying to shorten the distance.
All right, so what you're trying to eliminate, I'll call it your hardship, at least in my opinion, is not financial, it's more because of either a physical restriction, et cetera. You want to shorten that distance that they have to walk from the car to enter the house.
Yes, sir.
You want to drop them off sort of right in front, at the front door.
Yes, sir. Well, it's a little, I want to say it's a little bit of both, of family and to have more space, so. But of course, the most important thing is family and disability.
Where do you store your snow now, all in the back?
My snow?
Yes.
Well, no, just, you mean in the driveway? Oh, yeah, I'll put it in whether it's, it's right here or in the back.
So you have no problem storing your snow?
No, no problem, no problem.
All right, we're going to visit your property also.
Sounds good.
And we'll have our administrative assistant contact you with the time. What I'd like, if you can, because your drawing does not have any dimensions on it. I'd like you to mark out your driveway, the driveway that you want to put in.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to know the dimensions of your two existing, and you don't have to be fancy, you can use a rock in each corner.
Yes, sir.
And just say, it's 30 feet apart. Some people use orange spray to, there's the corner, so we know what it is. But I'd like an idea of this 17-feet-wide mark in a couple spots, so I can sort of see the curvature of the proposed driveway.
Yes, sir.
And so I know what the 17 feet and the impact on your front lawn is going to be.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
And, and this also, because this is going back 25 feet?
If you're going to move it back, just mark off where the two points in the back will be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz, what's the phone number you can be reached at?
71?
Yes.
816?
816?
0135.
0135?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, personal question?
Yes, sir.
Are you still in the military?
No, sir. I'm veteran.
Because you keep, sir, I haven't recalled that for a long time. But I kind of like the sound of it.
I picked up one back too. Don't get used to it.
Thank you. All right, so we're not going to close your hearing either, it's going to remain open just like there, so we'll do your site visit. You may leave, we may stay if you want until I close this meeting, but yours will remain open, and Mariella will be contacting you with the time.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Now he's got you in the habit. Okay, I've got to get my agenda here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roland.
Great visual.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, let's see. Give me your agenda.
I'm trying now. Nope, that's just the...
Thank you.
Oh, here it is.
I got them now.
Yeah, Randy's quick.
Okay, Mariella, I'm going to ask you, do we have any correspondence that we've received in the mail or anything? Any?
Right now, we just received this one, that was through email.
Oh, is this the one you gave me?
Yes.
Okay, that's just about the reman?
Yes.
But no miscellaneous mail or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Do we have any meeting, I don't, I don't have any meeting minutes?
I have a draft of the May meeting done, working on the June, and I'll get them before the next meeting.
Do the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. I'd like to bring two items up that are not on here. As required, we need to vote in officers for the coming year. We will do that next meeting. And then the second item is, had a brief discussion with the building commissioner and regarding some of the expenses and costs. I have not seen our budget in a couple of years, so I'd like to see that, but we're going to look at the fees that we're charging for variance and special permits. It's probably been, I'll ask the building commissioner, how long have you been here? Seven?
Seven.
So it's been seven?
It's been more than seven years.
It's probably 12 or 13 years.
I would say at least 10 anyway, since we've looked at it, and I'm sure the cost of printing, advertising in the paper, et cetera, has gone up. I would like to ask Mr. Jean if Mariella could just put a little something together for me in terms of what our costs are for the newspaper, if we're going to run either one single advertisement or multiple cases, and what the cost is to put that in, because it has to go in twice.
That's right.
So I'd like to see what that cost is coming forward. And if we, do we have a tally on postage? If we're mailing stuff out to like the abutters and people like that?
Not to my knowledge, sir, but certainly we have some, some abutters mailing's going out next week, we could certainly take a...
It could be a base to start from.
We could keep track of that.
Yeah, because I want to see what, you know, the postage costs are. And I'd like, and I know they've probably already submitted budgets for this year, this coming year. The last couple of years, I have not received the zoning budget.
Budget has remained the same during my...
Seven years?
During my tenure, it has not changed, with the exception of a slight increase for postage.
Yeah, because I mean, in the past, I would look at if, what the postage was, materials and supplies, because we did not want to burden your department saying, hey, we need a recorder or something, I tried to put it in our capital items, but I haven't seen the budget, so I want to hopefully for next year, get a copy of our budget for zoning, I want to take a look at that, and that will help us. We'll probably make some activity on the fees before then, but that will help keep in line what the fees are and what our expenses are. And I know one thing, we are not a profit center, because our money does not go into, did zoning make money or lose money? It goes into the general fund, so technically, unless you do a lot of work, you don't really know how much you've got, because it just goes in.
It's an offset.
Our costs are not covering our budget right now, our fees are not covering our Our costs are not covering our budget right now, our fees are not covering our budget right now. And my opinion is that this is a user-based service, should be fed by user-based fees. I don't think we should ask the general taxpayers to pay for this service.
Well, and I agree, and that's why we changed the fees back
Sure.
two eons ago.
Too long ago.
So I wanna take a look at it. Uh, I know a number was thrown out, and I'm not sure if I like that number, but I might talk with the board and we'll look at things incrementally.
The last time we did this, I think we looked, I, the analysis we did was, we took an average number of butters, be it ten, some, pick some number.
Average number of cases?
Uh, no, we did on a case, on a case-by-case basis. Okay, so, yeah, you say, okay, there was an average number of butters, so you say, okay, what's the postage? What's the envelope cost, what are the, copying those, those type of tangible costs? But there's also, we included, I think, a, a certain amount of labor costs.
Yep.
We did.
For the clerk.
We did.
The clerk time to do that, um, that function, you know, okay? How long does it take to do the minutes? How long does it do, take to do the decision? Mail those out again, so I mean, we, yeah, I think the last time we looked at all of those types of costs.
As many components as we could break down and get a handle on. We, we did that.
Yeah.
And that's how we went from, I think we were like two hundred for an SP and a hundred dollars for a variance, and that's why we went right to three hundred, but we didn't separate them, they both got three hundred.
Three fifty, huh?
Three fifty.
Three fifty. You know, I'd like, you know, I'd like to keep them the same, because it gives a lot to handle, it's not moving around different monies, but make them reasonable that covering the cost.
We can do that.
Can, the things Randy brought up, you could probably provide us?
Of course.
And then I can, we can work on a, a cost analysis and see where we are.
Okay.
So, let me ask you, do we need council approval if we just, like, no?
Do they still, do butters go out certified still, or are they just regular mail?
Regular mail, right, Mariella? We don't send the butters letters certified, do we? All of them?
Okay, so we'll need that cost.
It's eight dollars a head.
No, I was just gonna say that could jump the cost quite a bit.
There's forty of butters, that's three hundred and twenty dollars just to mail their butters notices.
We're already, we're exceeding, almost exceeding the fee.
One thing to, and I, I'm not advocating this, but one thing we could explore is requiring the applicants to do the mailings for the butters. And they submit a certification letter, but then again, potentially, there's no guarantee that the butters will gather.
Right.
But if they, but if they don't follow through, then you can deny the, their application.
Yeah, I mean, that was brought up even before.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna say it was John Flick, but I believe the city solicitor, he didn't mount a great argument against it, but he sort of supported not to do that, because...
Yeah, I would, I would definitely be against that, just from the, the, the facts of trying to collect that and, and keep a timeline.
Yeah, and he said, make sure, you wanna be certain those letters went out.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said, don't leave it to them, because if they miss one, you could be facing, you know, a court coming in and saying, was it an error?
That's, that sounds like all I need to hear.
Yeah, so those are, if you can work on pulling up all of those numbers, and we'll put it together and see what the budget looks like.
Sure.
And we have no mileage, no transportation, that's out of the budget.
Right.
So the only thing we have would be supplies. We've got a recorder, other than that...
You've got office supplies, you've got your stipends, and you have a professional development line item, I believe.
Yeah, and those are about the only costs, and I know my budget used to run around three. But things have changed dramatically, and because it goes into the general fund...
It's seventy-four hundred dollars a year.
Nobody reports back and say, your budget was three thousand, you spent seventy-five hundred dollars. Nobody had a record of that, so...
Well, we do.
Does your postage come out of your budget?
Comes out of ours.
No, it doesn't come out of, it comes out of the, the city pays for it.
The general, the general account.
Yeah, that, so that's why I go through it.
It's being under the treasurers or something, I think.
Then again, you're asking the taxpayers to pay for that. And this could be, very easily be a user-based fee.
So that's why if you can get that data and we'll take a look at it and see where we are.
Piece of cake. Would you like me to email it to you ahead of time, so that you have some time to digest?
This week? No.
How about a week before the next meeting?
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I wasn't gonna be around this week, and I say, oh, God.
And, and I'm gonna need more time than that to get it together anyway.
I would say within the next month, if you can pull it together.
Well, we're gonna have another meeting in a month, so I think in three weeks, I'll have it.
You don't have to be a hundred percent accurate.
Just the best guess.
I think you said a better will suffice.
You got it.
Okay.
It's not that difficult to figure out, it's really not.
Alright, well, that's great to hear. Uh, so what we'll do is, we'll converse after, and we'll see what we can do for time. And, uh, what are you, when are you off? When are you taking off again, Dave?
September.
Oh, we got time.
So I allocated August, as I had mentioned to you when you asked me to sit in, and I could do August meeting.
Well, you're on the August meeting now.
Yes, I am.
What's your, what house Saturday for you, Randy?
This Saturday?
This Saturday?
I'll try to wrap this up right now.
What time are you looking at?
I like the morning.
I'm open.
Uh, it looks like I'm open.
Nine o'clock someplace.
I can be open.
Okay. Last Saturday, nine, eight-thirty?
Sure.
Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty, on Saturday, the twenty-third.
Right.
Okay.
Who are we do, who are we doing first?
I'd like to do Gary's last.
Who's last?
Gary Lorden.
Oh.
Let's do Greenwood Street first, we'll do, uh, Stephanie second, and Gary last, because that could end up asking more questions and taking more time and infringe on the other time.
So Greenwood, Stephanie?
And Parker.
And then Parker.
Is that this Saturday?
Is that okay, Mariella? You can get in touch with them tomorrow? And we'll do...
Eight-thirty, nine.
Greenwood Street, eight-thirty. Stephanie Drive.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. Gary Lorden, nine-twenty. Thank you.
And because we're in a public meeting, we technically don't have to post it, but if she would post a notice on the, on the...
The wire?
The wire thing, that'd be good.
Okay. That's correct.
Alright, just looking ahead, are you looking to, Mr. Chairman, have a decision meeting before the, um, August meeting?
No, because we have to close the public hearings. So these three, three hearings will be continued to the August meeting.
Alright, and then were you thinking of making a decision after?
Based on what we see when we're on, I say, I don't wanna say definitely.
Which would be August the sixteenth, Dave.
Right, I got...
We'll do all in our power to keep it in August for you, Dave.
And you too, you're not gonna be here, don't just put it on me.
Well, I'm, I'm not leaving till the end of September, beyond the zoning meeting.
No, Mel's covering that, right?
Yeah. Alright, so we're all set. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Ayes.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.